The United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mario, if you would, please call the row.
Arthur Hamilton. Kimberly Jackson. Brian Fulton. I'm here. Julius Wiggum.
Here.
Marie Davis.
President.
Renee James. Michelle Bruce. Andrew Canuti.
Here.
Jerry McCoy.
Here.
For Mr. President.
Thank you. Any additions or deletions?
Good afternoon, Jeff Gagnon playing as administrator. We do not have any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda. However, I would like to say that we do have a few board members that are currently absent. So we could give Mr. Hamilton voting rights for tonight as well.
Thank you. Members, any disclosures, voting conflict disclosures? Any disclosures by members? Is there a motion?
No, but um, specific disclosures, I'm just familiar with the family.
Okay.
And I'll let the attorney indicate that there should be or any specific action by myself at time of voting.
Just general knowledge, there is no reason for you not to vote. Don't see any violation or anything that will cause a conflict.
Thank you. Any other disclosures? Hearing none, is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Right hand.
Moved by Mr. Canuti, second by Mrs. Davis. Seeing no opposition, show the agenda adopted. Approval of minutes is their motion. Moved by Mr. Hamilton, is there a second?
Second.
Properly moved in second, second by Ms. Davis. Seeing no opposition, show those minutes adopted. Jumping down to new business, application from John and Betty Atkins requesting site plan and special exception approval.
This must be Jeff Gagnon playing as administrator. Mr. Chairperson, when asked and I was anticipating, I missed my chance to introduce our newest member of planning department, Mr. DeAndre Bradley. He is now our principal planner. Want to say a couple of words or? But he'll be working basically in the same capacity of all of us, working on site plans, special exceptions, et cetera. So very knowledgeable, has excellent writing skills, so definitely an asset for the department and glad to have him aboard.
Well, I apologize, welcome, thank you.
I think we're talking in my part, so sorry. So yes, under new business, tonight we have an application from John and Betty Atkins requesting a site plan and special exception approval to develop and operate 165 child daycare and preschool facility, 1.12 acre vacant parcel plan known by parcel control number 56434229010000542. Located on the west side of RJ Henley Ave, north of West 26th Court and south of West 28th Street. On tonight, Myra Blaskew, who is the principal planner, will do the presentation.
Good evening, everyone, Myra Blaskew, senior planner. And I will be going over the site plan application, special application for Atkins' childcare facility. Like I just mentioned, there are two applications, this is a vacant undeveloped parcel. The site plan application is required by, because of the new building that they want to develop on site and the special exception because of the use they're proposing for this new building. Going to go over the location, get some address for the area. We'll go over the staff analysis and finalize with the special exception analysis. As you can see the screen, that's the map of the city of Riviera Beach with the red boundary. And that red dot, kind of like in the center of the city by RJ Henley Avenue in Blue Hare, that's where the property is located. And as we zoom in, we can see that it's north of 26th Court and west of RJ Henley Avenue. This parcel, since it's vacant and undeveloped, doesn't have an address, so it is identified with a parcel control number. As previously mentioned by Jeff, it is 56434229010000542. This is a parcel approximately 1.12 acres. And the zoning is RN15, it's a multi-family residential. And it's a medium density, multiple family residential. So studying on RJ, this is why you will look. When, this is why you will see when you're looking at the parcel, it's used as vacant land with trees on it. As you can see, that yellow sign, that's what we use for the advertisement on site. We also did the advertisement by mail with 400 feet. Properties that are within 400 feet of this property were notice of this appearing. Then we also did a legal ad on Palm Beach Post. From the side, when you look into the east, there's the two images on the top. You will see residential, single family. When you look into the west, that's kind of like from the center of the parcel, but you will see also residential structures. Those are multiple family residential. The north and the south, they are all vacant and most of the property around the parcel is vacant. This is the site plan that was provided by the applicant. Applicant worked hard trying to provide the, a good continuation, a good layout of the site. It was kind of hard, but they made it work. They also tried to kind of get an idea, there is a parcel south of the proposed parcel. They tried to purchase it, but I guess they're not really successful. That's elevation, just the idea of what the building would look like. Now we can go over the staff analysis. The proposed use, applicant is requesting to operate, build and operate a childcare facility as parcel identified by parcel control number 56434229010000542. This facility will be able to serve up to 165 children while pointing out to 1800 vehicles. The multiple family RN15 zoning district information requested use if the special exception and site plan approval is granted by city council. As far as the comprehensive plan, the proposed use, we can system the city's comprehensive plan for levels of service, city services such as roads, water, sewer, and garbage collection will be available to the site. In addition, a utility easement was recorded through an adjacent parcel to the west of the proposed development location, 2730 Avenue S, to provide for necessary water flow requirements to this site. As far as landscape, the plan that was provided with this development approval, you will provide a new landscape after the code, as is required. The applicant is providing 46 parking spaces in total. Two are accessible spaces or handicap. Four are covered spaces that serve as drop-off area, an additional area designated for pickup and drop-off. Traffic, traffic, trip generation should be less than 500 trips per day. We'll go over the special exception analysis, it might sound a little repetitive, but just for your information to show that they're complying with the special exception requirements and also for the record, we will go over this analysis. The ingress to and the ingress from the property. Vehicular and pedestrian ingress to and ingress from the site is available directly off of Avenue RJ Henley Ave. The off-street parking, loading area, the applicant is providing 46 parking spaces in total. As far as the economic, the noise layer and other effects can separate these use from the surrounding area. There is a fencing and landscape buffer proposed for this site all around the entire perimeter of the site. For services, they have on-site dumpster for coverage collection, these proposed.
Getting a lot of feedback, I'm not sure where that's from.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me there? Try this one.
Actually, I just seen Walter pass by, Jeff. He's out in the front.
For a step back, can you still hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
As far as utilities, again, utilities will be available on site. And also the utility easement was recorded through an adjacent parcel to the west of the proposed development. This parcel is located on 2730 Avenue S. This easement was to provide for this, whatever necessary water flow required for the entire district. Screening, buffering, landscaping, staff feels that adequate landscaping has been proposed, which is to be maintained according to the city's plan development regulation. An adequate landscape buffer has been proposed from the side. Forest signs and displays outside of the property. So far, there's a wall mounted sign and a monument sign, proposed just the location, but the signs will be regulated for the code and the type of the building purpose. And for required yards and open spaces, required, the required ratio of areas and in previous area has been met. The green space is present in form of landscaping, landscape buffers and play areas. There's an area of 8,250 square feet that's been proposed as just for playground area. Staff recommends approval of the application and going on the questions the applicant is pressing.
Thank you, Jeff, members, any questions of the presentation?
Yes, I have a couple of questions.
Ms. Davis?
Maybe, I'm not sure, this is actually for Mario, maybe the applicant. What is the difference between a preschool and a daycare? And I believe the requirement's the same.
Good afternoon, my name is Juan Atkins. I reside at 1117 West 10th Street, Riviera Beach, Florida. I am the son of John and Betty Atkins, who are the applicants. And I'm also the director of Atkins 1011 Care on 10th Street, Riviera Beach. Preschool and daycare are really one and the same. They're used interchangeably, that I'm not aware of any legal difference in the definition between a preschool and a daycare center. I think a child daycare center is how things are listed in, in the Palm Beach County rules and regulations. You'll see them referred to preschools as child daycare centers, but they're one and the same.
Ms. Cohen?
Just a couple of questions for the applicant. This new preschool proposal, is this in addition to what you have on Australian? Or is this a total moving from Australian in, I think it's what time?
Yes.
Is this a total move or is this in addition to?
This will be in addition to.
In addition to, okay. The only other thing I had added up, you had 46, if I correctly found around, 46 parking, 12 overhang, overhang parking with canvas where it's out of the rain and two handicaps. So you have a total of approximately 60 vehicles at any one time that can be in that parking area? If, yes?
The 46 includes of the 12.
Includes of the 12, okay. Now, if for any reason, and this is a vehicle parking on the street and turning in, you have, it is 136 facility? It's over 100?
The life of capacity?
Yes.
Will be up to 165.
165. Now say for, I know RJ Henley is down the street. And maybe it's in a rare occasion that 165 students or parents are coming to pick their, their students up. As far as the driving into that one way they're coming down RJ Henley, I would assume mainly from Blue Hare. Would there be a problem with traffic for the residents going in, has that been the catch? That's only if you had the 160 plus.
I guess in a worst-case scenario, there would be potential traffic issues. We don't anticipate that happening. Our current analysis is that the project will be under 500 trips per day, which only requires a traffic statement, which is simply, it's just a letter versus a full traffic study. So, you know, if, I guess worst-case scenario, everyone shows the ball at once, but I don't think it's going to happen very often. Additionally, I know many families will either carpool at the location or multiple children will be from the same family, so go right.
One last question, this will be a one-way in, one-way out? A circle of from RJ Henley? Or is, will this be connected to, from the drawing? Will it be connected to the S Avenue where there's an exit on X Avenue or egress, ingress?
Currently, because of site constraints, I know that the Atkins did look to try and purchase neighboring properties and unfortunately, they were unsuccessful in doing so. They've owned this parcel for some time now, I think it's been 10, 10 years, well, 12 years. So they bought it with the intention of doing this facility once timing was right for them. But they couldn't acquire additional parcels unfortunately. So as currently proposed, it is both entrance and exit point of RJ Henley Ave, which is on the east side of the site, so it's not allowing the traffic.
Thank you. Any other members?
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton?
Good sound. The property is basically landlocked, no easement to the west of the proposed site, correct?
It's mostly correct. There actually had to be a utility easement established to connect the water line from Avenue S to the property itself.
And that water line is basically underground?
The water line would be underground, yes. There's no right-of-way or ingress or ingress above ground.
Any other members?
I have a question.
Ms. Davis?
Regarding the neighbors, are there neighbors? It looked like in the photograph, there were some neighbors. I just wondered if they were within the 200 or 300 feet.
Well, what we did, I know our code requires 300 feet and simply 300 feet hasn't been working. I know the board expressed that they wanted additional nailouts. So despite this site in particular, being that the adjacent parcels are vacant, 300 feet would be even less helpful. So we did 500 feet, which when I measured out the radius, it actually encompasses everything you see in this area. So a 500-foot buffer would basically get this entire radius. And I think what you're alluding to is that we received a feedback, comments from the neighbors and we haven't received comments either way. I do know however, Mr. Atkins and the daycare facility is definitely of all respect in the community. They've been here for a long time and they just do a stand-up job, so.
So how do you, do you send letters to all those people or?
Yes, there was a mail out sent to both, it was property owners. And Mario's joking, saying he can show his paper cuts from folding all the envelopes and folding the letters. But we sent through US Mail notification and also there's a legal affidavit, which is put in Palm Beach Post.
Thank you.
Any other members?
Yes, just a couple of quick questions for the applicant. One of the things that, the way this appears to me, that the person would drive in, pull into a parking place, and then bring the child into the facility, is that kind of the way it would work?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Had you thought in the development, there's some kind of a, you know, like circular drop-off area? Or is the property just not allowing that?
The width of the property would not allow for a circular drop-off. That, that was definitely part of the plan when we were actively engaged in trying to acquire an adjacent parcel.
Okay. So you have, you currently have two facilities, correct?
Yes, sir.
So this will be your third?
Yes.
Okay, all right, no other question?
Mr. Wiggum?
Yes, what will be the hours of operation?
Hours of operation will be 6:30 a.m. until 5:30 p.m.
Now, my other question, there will be a fence around the facility, right?
Yes.
To protect the children from getting out, right?
Yes.
Now, during the hours of the parent pickup, will there will be anyone out there to help direct the traffic or? You know, like RJ Henley School, they got a people out there.
Yes, there, the nature of our pickup and drop was a little different. In a preschool, we can't simply release children to walk away. Parents must come in and actually sign children in and out. So we won't have an issue with, with children possibly being in danger from traffic because the exchange will occur between us and the parent directly once they are inside of the facility. So they'll drive in, walk in the facility, check the child in and out, drive out. Now, I understand there may also be some pedestrians for parents who live in the immediate area and there will be, there are sidewalks and things where they will be able to safely walk. But I'll also offer, I do understand during peak drop-off and, and pickup times, there will be an increased amount of traffic, which will necessitate me having staff to make sure that parents are properly parking, parking in parking spaces instead of parking in a right-of-way, which would cause bobber necks. And that we actively manage now in our current facility and we will continue, we will also do that in any facility.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, one other question for the applicant.
Good night.
How many people will you employ there?
At least eight, once we are at full capacity, we anticipate at least 18 teaching staff. Then we'll have some support staff for cooks, facilities, maintenance, and some administrative. So there could be 22 or so people. In addition, we may have some part-time, 18 won't all be full-time, so we may have some who work some part-time hours. So I anticipate at full capacity, any given point in time, there'll be about 18 teaching staff there and two or three additional support staff.
Thank you, no other questions?
Thank you.
One more question.
Ms. Davis?
Just out of curiosity, when you had a point, in your daycare, are the ages 0 to 5 from 0 to 6?
Yes, we're licensed for children birth to five. We also have an aftercare program for students who are in elementary school up through fifth grade. We'll have the same, we'll provide the same care at the new facility for those ages.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members? In fact, Ms. Davis, that's one of the questions that I was going to ask, simply because if you look at that lot, I know a portion of RJ Henley Ave has to be designated as a school zone. And at least for the purposes of, if we're going to consider bringing in a daycare facility, which may typically operate those same hours in the morning as a school coming in, what determines on where that school zone is the actual beginning point? Is that something from engineering?
That's a good question, I don't know the answer off the top of my head. I don't know if that is mandated by Palm Beach County as far as the distance from the actual facility. But that's something that I can confirm with engineering. I believe you are right, I think there is, because of the schools in the north, that a portion of the street is promptly signed, that there's school presence, so that's something that we can look into as well.
And I was just asking because I would like to see if it could possibly be extended just to include that area because I know there's a few things that kind of made me think about a few items. There was somewhere in our packet that we seen that there should have been a 10-foot right-of-way, I guess placed at the front, placed off of RJ Henley Ave for the right-of-way for the city?
Yeah, I believe that was an engineering comment that was worked out with Mr. Allen.
So it's actually in the plan?
It was resolved between the architect and engineering department, yeah.
So were the other concerns that the engineering department brung up addressed?
Yes.
So they all were addressed because this is, this is approved. And I, and I guess if I can jump back a little bit, we look at what Mr. Bailey over in engineering wrote. Said utilities, I'm sorry, not utility, not Bailey, utility district said that this approves of the site plan.
Yeah, that was actually an extensive issue that was definitely resolved, that actually is related to Mr. Hamilton's question, where originally the site plan development had.
Can you speak up, Jeff?
I'm sorry. I think this microphone's working better than that one. For the utility department, there was, the original plan actually anticipated, I believe it was a 10-inch line on RJ Henley Ave, however, there was only, I believe, a 6-inch line. And now I'm not an engineer, so I don't know the technical aspects. However, the flow rates that they needed for fire suppression and other life safety issues couldn't be sustained by the water main that was located on RJ Henley. So that temporarily put the brakes on the project until they were able to work out an easement agreement with this property owner, which allowed them to utilize the water main on Avenue S, which I believe is a 10-inch line, and would allow them to maintain adequate flow rates to the facility. So at one point in time, project was basically on hold until that was worked out. But the easement was granted, it's been recorded in Palm Beach County Clerk's record and it's 100% resolved.
Well, according to this, it says this does not exist in the current site plan. And, you know, in looking at these, these mappings, I don't see that there's been any change. And it very, very well may have changed, but there should have been at least reading this. I didn't know if the applicant had met these or not, so there should have been some sort of updated memo at least, kind of.
I think I included, it's kind of varied, but I actually included the easement agreement that's been recorded in Palm Beach County.
I seen that. I did see that with the notarized stamp.
Yeah, so, so this is a document that resolved that previous question.
Well, is that the same for the number two item listed in the memo from the utility district where they cite that the site plan does not include the water and sewer drawings?
Yeah, they actually, the drawing that was approved and was recorded in the clerk's office was revised per utility department's comments. Because the original drawing that was to be recorded had a couple of, I guess, minor. was to be recorded had a couple of, I guess, minor details that the utility department wanted included as far as technical language and that type of thing. So it was, it was resolved and it was recorded.
Okay, I mean, this, I mean, you can see why I asked the question, because, I mean, the memo is all I see and I can't determine if there any water or sewer drawings, so I just had to, you know, I'm just curious to see if the applicant had met those and if there was any more current information regarding it.
Yeah, it was confusing. I'll, I'll take responsibility for that.
Quite alright.
Even the order is, the order could have been tabbed up a little better, made clear. But yeah, that, that was actually a really large item, so I'm glad you didn't bring that up, because that was, in essence, a project stopper until it was resolved.
And that's what I was gonna ask, as far as your staff analysis, is that based off of the other departments or is it solely from a planning and zoning perspective? Because when I was looking at it, I thought your staff analysis was completely independent of the other department's staff analysis, or your comments or recommendations?
Yeah, occasionally there's some overlap. However, each department looks at specific details. An example of potential overlap would be on a landscape plan, let's say. Planning and zoning will look at it to make sure that there's adequate shade trees for the code, and we may also make notation that within a five-foot radius or a specific distance that you can't have a main utility line. So the utility department may also make some more comments saying that within five feet of my utility line, I don't want a shade tree that's gonna interfere over time. So typically their, their depart, interdepartmental comments are just from specific departments and they don't have much overlap, but occasionally there is some minor overlap.
Okay. Another question I have for you. Being that this is so close to the other school, is there any kind of, I know for the family daycares that there's a buffer zone, is that not the case for not a family daycare, but a traditional daycare, according to our code? Because I think we had a, I don't wanna be wrong in saying fifteen-hundred feet buffers?
I'd have to go back and double-check, but, um, when I did the review of the plan, there wasn't a buffer issue at all. I believe this, this shows five-hundred feet, so not much further than that would be a thousand, fifteen-hundred feet, so there was no conflict that I saw.
Okay. I think that's my major concern. Is any other members? Mr. Colton?
Just a follow-up question regarding the school zone. Now, you have a school RJ Henley to the north. The proposed site to the south. Now, if it's, would consider to be a school zone, will there be or has there been any consideration of flashing lights or signs to say slash school zone, basically for traffic that may be going through at thirty, forty miles an hour?
Yeah, that, that's something I can revisit with our engineering department. I think the simplest thing would be signage, roadway markings if necessary. The most difficult thing would be the actual coordinated flashing lights that are actually tied to certain times of the day. But I'll definitely, if you wanna make that part of the motion as a board, have staff just discuss this with the engineering department and make sure that signage is included on RJ Henley.
I do think that would be important for that particular section, because that's a significant amount of, um, block area for a school zone, and you wouldn't want someone speeding through at thirty miles an hour in that residential area or the school zone, and kids are possibly walking with their parents in the morning or in the daytime and someone just getting hurt.
Yeah, I think, I think there is a benefit that on the school, that there is an existing school on the street already, so most of the residents would have that awareness already entering the neighborhood. So the additional facility that's nearby, hopefully can carry over in that, that neighborhood mindset and awareness that there's children, schools present, hopefully that can more easily spread than a vacant site that was just always a street that people go there quickly on.
Yeah, I, I understand the, the neighborhood if I'm living there, but I'm not living there, and it's just an example, if I'm not living there, there's still should be an awareness with signs and/or flashing lights, so.
And my apologies, let the record reflect, Ms. Brooks is present. And you acknowledge, Ms. Brooks?
On this street, I do know the area, there is a speed bump, whatever you wanna call it. It's gonna be almost really close to where the entry, so there's already, um...
It's really difficult to see, but there's already a car that's just over and some deterioration of us. There's a, a little speed bump.
Mr. Gagnon, as far as the, the right-of-way that's gonna be designated for the city, does the city typically, how does the sidewalk paint, because I know I heard it mentioned pedestrian, potential pedestrian traffic?
Yeah, in, in this area, I believe the sidewalk's complete all the way up RJ Henley. It's, I don't care if I consume it on this, but you can faintly see it north and south here. It's actually just under the, the type itself. So, and it's on both sides of the street here as well. So that sidewalk modification is typically done within the city right-of-way, and that's for maintenance and liability issues. So that's something that will continue to coordinate with the applicant, so the burden will be on the city versus the applicant to maintain the sidewalk.
Okay, any other members? How many more questions? Hearing none. Does any member wish to make a motion taking action on this site plan in special exception? Is there a motion?
I have the motion that we accept the project as presented.
Motion by Ms. Davis, second by Mr. Hamilton. Any other concerns before roll call?
The only concern is that there's some signage to be added.
Well, if we can deviate just for a second. Jeff, now, I guess the question is, is that a function of the city to designate where school zones begin at?
I would say in this case that RJ Henley's the city road, so the most direct route for any new signage would be through the city and our engineering department, all that works.
Okay, Mr. Colton, you wanna ask Ms. Davis to amend her motion?
Ms. Davis, if you would, amend your motion to include signage?
Yes, I amend the motion to accept the project with signage.
It's been moved. Would you like to renew your second? Just a moment, Mr. Hamilton.
Just a question for staff. Uh, since, since signage is now a condition of approval, okay? There are certain sets of rules on where you can put signs and who puts them there, okay? Since this is on a borderline of a school zone, okay? My concern is adding something like that into this approval may just delay things. I mean, Atkins family's been here in the city doing things for a long time, and I, I think we should give a clean approval of this without conditions that say unless this happens and unless this happens. So that's my only argument.
A suggestion I can offer is, within the motion to approve, instead of having a hard-line condition for signage, simply add, add an additional request for staff to review signage and ensure that there's adequate school signage in the area. And in that way, the burden's on, on staff and the city versus the applicant.
I'm okay with that.
And that could be one motion, and that could be a follow-up motion directly after the motion to approve.
Any other concerns, comments? Ms. Davis, it's on you. You wanna withdraw and start all over?
Well, I'll amend it. I'll maybe, maybe I better start all over.
Withdraw and start all over.
My motion. Do we need to vote on it or anything?
No.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the project subject to staff reviewing signage regarding the school zone and any other signage relative to the project. Is that sufficient?
Would you restate your motion, please?
No. I make a motion to approve the project as submitted subject to approval, signage approval by staff.
I'm, I'm, I'm just curious, subject to sounds almost like condition.
Right.
So can we just say, let, let's just do two different motions, how's that, to make everything simple? So if you wanna withdraw one more time and start over?
I'll withdraw my motion. I make a motion to approve the project as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved by Ms. Davis, second by Mr. Hamilton. Any other concerns before we go to roll call? Mr. Velazquez, if you would, call the roll on site plan in special exception tool. Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Just to make a note again for the record, Ms. Brooks is present. Arthur Hamilton?
Approved.
Brian Colton?
Yes.
Julius Wickham?
Yes.
Marie Davis?
Yes.
Sheriff Bruce?
Yes.
Edward Canuti?
Yes.
Try to get my call?
Yes.
Anyone's voting motion approved?
Ms. Davis, you acknowledged for a motion.
I'll have to think about this a minute. I'd like to make a motion to, um, I'm not sure how to make this. If I need a little help. This is regarding the signage?
I think that basically the motion is that we're asking staff to review the signage, school signage and other signage in the general area and make a recommendation.
Second.
So the motion was made by Mr. Canuti, and second by Ms. Davis. Any other questions or concern? Hearing no questions, Mr. Velazquez, if you would, call the roll.
Arthur Hamilton?
Approved.
Brian Colton?
Yes.
Julius Wickham?
Yes.
Marie Davis?
Yes.
Sheriff Bruce?
Yes.
Edward Canuti?
Yes.
Try to get my call?
Yes.
Anyone's voting motion approved?
Thank you. Moving on to our presentation.
Can I just make one comment?
You're welcome, Ms. Davis.
Thank you. I think this project is really an asset to our community. And I'm not usually a fan of special exceptions, because I believe if we get too many of them, they weaken our zoning code. But I think this is a real asset to the community of surrounding that area, and it will bring more homes and more children and more pedestrian traffic and everything, and I think that this is a real boon for all of us. Thank you.
Good luck with the project.
Any other comments? Mr. Atkins, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to thank the board for their obvious due diligence in preparing and studying and reviewing our site plan. We also wanna let you know that we plan to build a world-class facility like none that exists in Revere Beach, and we thank you for the opportunity to prove your vote of confidence in the affirmative. My parents, John and Betty Atkins, have been doing this since nineteen seventy-six. We grew up as children in our childcare center, and this has been a project that's been in the works for eleven, twelve years. Ms. Davis, I wanted to quickly just give you a brief history. We were working with the Northwest redevelopment for a while and, and collaborating to do this childcare project along with infill housing development, but due to a lot of factors that were beyond our control, it didn't come to fruition. So we're glad to, at this point, have the opportunity to make our dream a reality, and I thank all of you, my parents, my sister, Twana Williams, my son Tyson, and my brother, Reginald, who couldn't be here. He was very instrumental in working with the planning department and, and putting this project together. So I wanted to make that recognition and thank all of you. Thank you.
Any other comments before we move into our presentation?
Alright. Mr. Chair, just a quick question for staff. When I, when I read the comments, it looked like the fire department really didn't make comments. They just gave a copy of the regulate, all the fire regulations. Am I, am I reading that right?
Yeah, they, they did provide this boilerplate comment to the applicant. It's, it's a situation where they're always accessible to the applicant and they've worked with the architect as far as specific regulations and codes, but that way they can say that this is the fire code, these are the concerns that we're gonna have to work through, so especially early on across this, when the site plan's being developed, they try to provide that information. And I've seen that becoming more, more of a trend recently from the fire department, just providing that information.
Thank you.
And on that same note, why is there discrepancy in the square footage from what the fire department had and what's on the lane use application? Because I think I seen nine thousand and there's eighty-eight hundred, ninety-six hundred and then eighty-eight hundred.
It could have been a type O on the fire, I don't know.
Okay, I don't think it makes a material difference. I was just curious, maybe they were looking at something that...
It could have just been, it could have been a type O, I don't know.
Okay. Mr. Wickham?
You know, I live in the area, uh, a few blocks from there, and this particular section has always been a concern for me, but I am glad to see that they're gonna put a daycare center in that facility. And down south of that, uh, there's supposed to be a development of homes that we approved a couple of years ago. And I hope that with this particular project, the people will start putting some homes up down there because it's needed. And as far as the police department on the corner of Twenty-Eighth and Avenue S, at one time, they were talking about putting a substation down there. I don't know what happened to that, but we do need a substation in the area. My reason for that is this. I don't know how you came out on the Fourth of July, but several years ago, we made some proposals that there, uh, about fireworks being conducted in our city. You cannot sell fireworks from a tent, it has to be in an enclosed building. We got that going. You cannot shoot fireworks in the street. We had that going. But on the Fourth of July, there were shooting in the streets. I saw that, I called the police department, gave them the location, we'll send someone out there. Thirty minutes later, no one came. The fireworks started at eight-thirty, and they went on into the night. I called the second time, we'll send someone out there. Forty minutes later, no one came. I called the third time, I told the dispatcher who I was, she knew me. I said, "Several years ago, we wrote proposals that fireworks could not be shot in the street." And on Avenue S between Thirty-seven and Thirty-six, they were, they had a pot that crossed, uh, probably Thirty-seven feet actually with twenty people. They were out there in the middle of the street. I had notified the police department about that a couple of times. That meant that all that trash was gonna be left right there on Avenue S, be cleaned up by the city. I don't think that city was bumpy. But when I called the third time, I made them aware that we had written up some provisions to prevent all this kind of activity. And what I did, that, five minutes later, three police cars were there, which was good that they came, because the neighborhood that I live in is full of senior citizens, and they are afraid to make calls. And they are afraid to make calls. I talked with them the next day, they said they were afraid. But it's gonna be some more tonight, I said, "No, it isn't." I didn't tell them what I had done with the police department. That next night, a ton of my cars were going all up and down the street, which I was glad to see. Because I was afraid with the traffic that goes up and down Avenue S, people had to stop and wait till the fireworks went off, that someone was gonna get hurt. Luckily, no one got hurt. So maybe, uh, before the next holiday, we need to sit down and look at our provisions that we wrote up. Because they shot all over the city. And, uh, I heard from West Palm Beach, they had the same problem. But there was a tent on North Lake that they were setting that fireworks down, that's where I should have been going about. Maybe we could work with other cities and the county to get some kind of activity. Because I got nothing against fireworks, believe me. But it's the location of where you are doing this fireworks. The city of Revere Beach gave a better display than the city of West Palm Beach did on their, uh, our back. And, and I'll tell you, it, 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 it was frustrating to the people, but no one really want to complain because they're afraid.
Yeah, I think, I think there's definitely, uh, power in numbers. So I would definitely continue to keep talking with your neighbors and those local residents and hopefully multiple calls will get a quicker reaction. I, I do know that, especially on Fourth of July, the police department is just inundated with calls. There's just a lot of, uh, a lot of activity going on with, with, uh, people making bad decisions as far as making too much and fireworks and they're definitely very busy. So, um, I know that normally that, not that slow to respond, but I would definitely communicate with your neighbors and then, um, there's power in numbers. And I do, I am familiar with the fireworks code that was passed, it's probably, it was actually a little before my time, it's probably nine years ago or so, um, if not a little bit earlier than that. The problem is that you alluded to is that it's just Revere Beach and not necessarily, um, North Palm or Palm Springs Gardens. So maybe that's something that we can work with, um, in your government, so we'll do that.
But what, uh, used to happen several years ago in Revere Beach, around about Cunningham Park, the patrolmen in the area, they were, they, they wasn't helping call, but they would ride down the street with their lights flashing on the patrol car and let people know, "Hey, it's time to stop." Yeah, I got that, and I guess, uh, people having fun, but at a certain time of night, that need to stop. And I wish the patrolmen would start doing that again, just ride down the street with their lights flashing and warn the people, "This is overtime." Thank you very much.
Um, since we're kinda deviating from our presentation, I have a question, and I guess it's a little bit off topic. I was actually reviewing the codes and I, last week I had the opportunity of attending Councilman Bruce Gaitz's town hall. And I know I heard some discussion about the new Cunningham Park, but I actually seen a, a layout of it and, uh, the visuals, and it was very nice. And I was looking at section twenty-seven thirty-six of our code and I'm trying to read the first few lines if there's, uh, nobody that objects. But it says approval of public improvements, public or private utilities, no street, park or other public way, ground or space, no public building or structure and no public utility, whether publicly or privately owned, shall be constructed or authorized in the city, nor shall any real property be acquired by the city until and unless the location and extent thereof are submitted to the board for its information. And I was curious, I was like, wow, this is a really nice park. And I heard a lot of good things about it and I heard some of the things that we should be mindful of in bringing a new park like that. But why is that something that doesn't come before the board? Because at least, and I can certainly pass this down to our legal counsel to kinda take a look at, but it, that almost defined that exact definition, like they've already went through the, through the conceptual plan already and had I not went to the meeting, I would, I would not have been known. But this pretty much says that no street or park, whether it be publicly or private, shall be authorized or constructed without coming through the board for information. And, you know, I, I, I don't wanna really call anybody to the carpet, but, you know, I think as a planning board and a local planning agency, as, as we're authorized by the state statute, that, you know, we should be involved in these kind of things and not just at a town hall meeting. And I, and I wanna see if that can kinda, at least going forward, because I grew up on Avenue S at Cunningham Park. So to see that I'm already in the design phase was great, but, you know, I wanted to know, well, was there any kind of input from the public? You know, I never even knew of anything that was going on with the park until I just heard people say, "Well, you know they're gonna build a park." Well, it wasn't until I went to the town hall meeting last week that they had a really nice plan. Not that I object, but I think it's great to have public input. And a lot of things came up in that public meeting, in the town hall meeting, that was not for the actual park, but it made great sense. I can remember a lady that lives on the corner of T Avenue and Thirteenth Street, she says, "This park is great and it's really nice, but it doesn't make any sense to build a million-dollar park if we haven't even paved the streets on the side of the park." Which is a public works concern, but it's an issue that we all need to consider. Because why would you invest a million dollars and have, uh, on-street parking and we don't think about paving the street? So those are the kind of concerns and I would like to see how we as a board can be more involved in getting the word out so people can know, because even as a board, a member of this board, I didn't even know. And not only that, I lived less than an eighth of a mile from the park. So it was just like, wow, that was a bit surprising. And, and again, I was very much thrilled and I liked it, I liked the, the project, what I seen, but I just wanna see how we can be more involved in this process. Um, so, um, any other concerns, questions, comments?
One question. Was staff aware of this project?
Is the question saying, is the city staff or am I personally aware of it?
It was city staff.
I believe it was city initiated, so I would say yes.
So your department was, uh, was involved and/or knew about it?
I have not seen plans come across my desk.
Okay.
Well, the town hall meeting was attended by the city council and actually there was a representative from each department. So I know at some point, remember, we're working with the planning department, which is a part of community development. This park is, is operated and controlled by Parks and Recreation, so there had to be some sort of city involvement. And, you know, when I was reading this, this led me to a lot of different concerns. Like I know, I hear, I heard people talk about the new police, uh, the police and fire building over on Thirteenth Street. And that's definitely real property. And I've heard people say they went and visited, you know, we don't even know about these things. I mean, I, I don't even understand if the code, is this not, is this outdated? Is this not the same standard that we should be living by? Because some of these things that I've actually found in here, we're not, I mean, quite frankly, we're not exercising, we're not using, we're not abiding by some of these things. And I would like to see if this is not what the intentions of, of the planning board is, then, you know, maybe we should remove some of this stuff. Well, we can remove it, maybe the council should consider removing it. And I think that's why it's critical, like, as controversial as the Seven-Eleven project was, I wanna know what happened. You know, I don't wanna hear about it when I sort of happen to turn on channel eighteen and find out that it's on the agenda. You know, I think that there should be better communication and I get enough spam. I want it to be something that I'm interested in. I want a bunch of junk mail of stuff that is a, about my city, that's relevant to, you know, my day-to-day living. So that's just something to think about, any other members?
I have a couple of things. Um, I think that when you go through the, um, the ordinance, you find that we have a lot of responsibilities. It's pretty frightening what we're actually responsible for that we don't do. And, um, if it doesn't, some of it doesn't matter what the city of Revere Beach decides because it's governed by Florida statute. And we're an advisory board of course to the city council, we're not an advisory board to community development, which leads me to also the altering of land use regulations without authority. So, um, that related to indirectly the Seven-Eleven project. So I'd sort of like to find out what the status is, um, correcting the land use regulations that were previously changed by staff.
I'm not sure if I fully understand the question, but, um, language that was provided to city council is approved and that's the current language that is in place.
Well, if I remember correctly, the language also when it was presented indicated that it came, the information came from the, um, community development, that the land use regulations had been approved by planning and zoning. And that wasn't accurate, we didn't approve those. We approved some of them, but we didn't approve. And they were changed by the time from April or May of two thousand thirteen to October. So, you know, we have to do something, if we're responsible for it and someone else is, um, changing it, then that's not right.
The project is still pending city council review, I'm not gonna make additional comments on it.
No, I'm not really referring to the project, referring to the land use regulations and not just the Seven-Eleven.
I'll, I'll have to follow up and...
Could you give us a follow-up, next one?
I would prefer if the board made a motion requesting that.
I'm sorry. Ms., can you elaborate, 'cause I'm not even sure what, what, what are we, what are we discussing? Are we discussing Seven-Eleven or are we discussing the land development regulations?
We're discussing the land development regulations, not Seven-Eleven.
Okay, and your concern is?
The land use regulations that we approved, um, were changed.
Okay.
They were, they would, let me go back in time, when the project came before us, um, I thought, I was told that I had outdated land use regulations because related to the project, you couldn't have a gas station in two primary streets and those two primary streets were Blue Heron and Broadway. So I believe that was correct, I had outdated information. But upon further request after request after request, I eventually did get those land use regulations and found that mine were not on date. When I looked at the ordinance, um, the ordinance was different than what we approved. So when I went, so I presumed originally that the city council changed the, the land use regulations, which is fine. But the each allocation to either the CRA, with the follow-up data, said it, the department it came from was community development and the planning and zoning acting as the planning and zoning or land use regulation for the city of Revere Beach had approved the following, blah, blah, blah. And actually, we didn't approve that, it was changed. And in addition to that, there were other items, and I only went through one section because I don't want, really want to delve into this too far. But I, they were definitely changed and there were, um, land use regulations changed for Center Island as well.
Any other members wishing to comment? Is there a...
I have a comment on what you were asking about. Uh, a few years ago, there was a proposal to start paving the streets from Thirty-Seven Street to Thirteenth Street, which was near the park. They were putting sidewalks on Avenue T because we had requested sidewalk for the safety of the kids that watch the elementary, if you remember that. They started doing it, the neighbors went in the uproar because they were doing...
Mr. Wigan, I'm sorry, and let me interrupt you. I was asking for questions or comments concerning what Ms. Davis had presented. And interesting enough, last Thursday, that same thing that you're talking about, the Public Works project, to put the sidewalk and repave it, actually came up in the town hall meeting last Thursday. So, uh, if you have channel eighteen, I would invite you to take a look at it. But specifically, Mr. Brent Johnson in Public Works and Mr. Randy Sherman, finance director, gave a presentation on that item specifically. And I remember Ms. Powell speaking of the area between Thirteenth Street and Thirty-Seven and also the sidewalks on T Avenue, so they would probably be best to address that concern. I was speaking of the, the, uh, subject that Ms. Davis is talking about.
Oh.
So if, if, uh, there aren't any other comments or concerns, is there a motion to direct staff to look into this further? Because, you know, um, I, I remember that there was some sort of inconsistencies. I was just kinda curious, was it customary for that to work in that process? Like, you know, and I guess, here we go again, I've seen this movie before. I would like to know what happens after the information leaves us. Once it go, does it go to the CRA board for approval, does it go to the city council? When we first took up a said project this year in March, I said, "Well, when did we do, adopt the land development regulations for the downtown, for the CRA?" And, you know, it was done last year. I guess that's a little disingenuous to have a planning agency that passed language and we don't even know if the current language, language has been adopted by the city council. And then, when I asked the question, and I believe it was either March or April, when we first had this said project come up, you know, it was like, it was done last year, and I'm thinking to myself, "Well, at what point, you know, do we know this?" I guess we just need to follow it, we need to pay attention to the legal ads, we need to pay attention to, you know, some of these... I mean, come on, are we outsiders, so?
I think it's incumbent upon staff, I mean, we're volunteers. City council placed us in a position of trust and we place them in a position of trust. And I think it's incumbent upon them to let us know the status, we shouldn't have to be researching all around town.
Right. And I know there was, uh, quite some discussion, uh, at the CRA meeting about whether it was consistent. And I actually attended that meeting and I was thinking to myself, "Wow, this sounds so familiar." Because some of these same questions were asked by the planning and zoning board. And when you get in the meeting, it's like, everybody's kinda sidestepping or evading the question. But I can remember specifically that, you know, I remember you bringing up the question, saying that this is not allowed in the two primary streets, but, you know, I haven't seen anything that we've had that permitted it.
There was.
And I guess that begs the question, does this process, this whole planning and zoning process of us being a planning agency, I know, I understand that it's a rivalry in, in, in nature, but is it a role in which we can approve something and then staff can go back and make edits or changes and so forth? Simply because if that's in fact the case, that undermines the whole idea of having a planning board of staff can go back and make edits and changes. So is that customary that staff does that after planning zoning board makes a recommendation?
I don't think it would be customary for any sort of substantial change to language that was provided to planning and zoning board to be brought to the CRA board, if it was in the CRA overlay, or the city council.
Does it have to meet some sort of threshold of being substantial? I mean, even something as simple as, uh, "and" or "may" or "shall" represents a significant substantial change. So I mean, does there have to be a, a minimum threshold? I mean, the, the, uh, one comma, the letter "and" can, can simply change a whole statute altogether, could change ordinances altogether.
It very likely.
So, I mean, how do we gauge on whether it's substantial or not? Because, you know, I think, Jeff, we're, we're, at least I believe everybody is starting to understand where this is going. But I, I mean, really, you know, I mean, it's quite apparent that sometimes we make our recommendations and maybe that's not the way that it's presented to council. And, you know, I was looking at some stuff and just reading the code and it says, "One of our jobs is to make findings." Findings is not just a recommendation of approval, findings is detail, findings is item by item, our recommendations of a project. So, you know, I was reading some other stuff, not that I'm willing to do it, but I know there was some stuff that said, "Every construction site or proposed project site should be open and we should be able to access it." You know, I'm not, you know, I'm not exactly at that point where I'm ready to walk on into any site and make any kind of professional determination, but, you know, there's some things that we should be doing as a board that, you know, we need to kinda, we need to kinda think about, is this really a function of the board? And if so, how do we go about, you know, implementing these kind of, kind of projects and so forth? Any other comments?
Are you asking for any other comments on land use?
Yes, at this moment, yes. Okay, is there a directive by motion, Ms. Davis?
Yes, I'd like... Yes, I'd like staff to bring us up to date next... Let us report next month regarding the change or that two and why the land use regulations were changed from what we presented.
Ms. Davis, if I can probably offer a little assistance, because I don't want to go so far to say it's been changed. Can we ask for something that's a little more, not as a...
Corrective, direct.
Well, maybe something like a timeline or the different versions or an explanation of the land development regulations from, you know, when they left. But I want to err on the side of we always operate in good faith, that we always do things as we should. Exactly. So, I... I mean, just for the sake of, you know, our hard-working city staff, that we want to kind of tailor it to say we'd be optimistic.
Why don't you hand the gavel to the Vice Chairman and make the motion? He's a better suited to make it than I am.
Okay, the imaginary gavel is handed to the Chair, and you can actually keep it for the rest of the evening. Mr. Chair.
One suggestion before you start your motion is, I think, a timeline in there, which you mentioned, it would be important when things happen.
Okay. Any other suggestions or recommendations of the motion?
No other comments. Call for the motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we direct staff to look into the CRA Downtown Development Regulations, LDR, specifically relating to the, I guess, the primary and secondary street provision.
All the changes that were made that we don't know about? Any errors that might have been made?
Any land development regulations that was changed subsequent to leaving the Planning and Zoning Board? And if it's easier, some sort of timeline on the process after it left the Planning and Zoning Board, such as if it went to the council or to the CRA?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Call the roll, please. Artel Hamilton?
Yes.
Brian Colton?
Yes.
Yuris Rehm?
Yes.
Marie Davis?
Yes.
Alicia Brooks?
Yes.
Edward Canoe?
Yes.
Should I take my call?
Yes.
Anyone's voting will be approved. I left the record to reflect that Mr. Colton had to leave. 7:51. No other comments. Let's move on to the second item, the sign code.
Hey, what's good? Jeff Gagnon. Under Rooming Number 9, Presentation Workshop, Proposed Sign Code Updates. And our sign code can be found in Chapter 28. Specifically provided in your packet are Articles 1 and 3. I started on the last slide. So, Chapter 28 governs our signage. For the most part, it is an ancient code. It was 1957. Majority of it has been unchanged since then. There's been two amendments that I'm aware of. One was in 2011, and that was in association with Bill Works. Another happened in, I think, 1999, and that had to do with signage along arterial roadways. And those specific roadways were Dr. M.K. Jr. Boulevard, Old Dixie Highway, Leharan Boulevard, Broadway, 13th Street, and Military Trail. So, the city designated those roadways as important arterials that had an additional overlay and specific design standards. The thing that's really unique about those streets is that the code calls for monument signs as really the only type of signage for new developments. So, what we're now seeing is with the Marina redevelopment, there's a new sign package that's being envisioned. Within that package, there's a landmark sign is, I guess, the technical term for it. However, our code doesn't speak to a landmark sign. Our code's silent. So, I really wanted to start the ball rolling as far as thinking about what signage is appropriate for our city, where it should be located, will zoning dictate signage? Should it be development type or maybe an established district such as Marina District, a specific neighborhood, but to start revisiting the sign code and seeing what needs to be updated since 1957. So, as I was saying, within the definition section, there's no definition for the following types of signage. So, there's no definition for landmark signs, pedestrian signage, or specific wave finding signage that's included. Information kiosks are not described, and regulatory signage isn't defined either, which is a stop sign, a one-way sign, more of the typical traffic or engineering type signage.
You said "wave"? Did I hear you say "wave" something?
Uh, wave finding. Wave finding is the coin term for point A to point B to point C.
Oh, okay. Okay. Sorry, Mr. Chair.
In addition to that, there's a couple oddball definitions such as directional sign and add-on sign where they're defined, but then they're never used within the code. So, you know, it was unusual to me for an add-on sign to be defined, but then there's no usage. So, why have it defined? So, those are some of the weird things that we notice in the code. Additionally, an entrance sign is defined, but there's no development standards provided. So, I guess potentially a developer could come in and say, "Do you want an entrance sign?" And staff says, "Great, we want you to have an entrance sign." And the developer says, "Well, what can we do?" Staff says, "You can do an entrance sign, but we don't have any development regulations that are actually coordinated to what an entrance sign is." So, that's an issue. Again, lagging upon because no development standards. I know, you know, this may not be something we want to get into, but some counties and towns and cities actually regulate the size of the sign in proportion to the hole it's on, so on and so forth. I don't think we want to get into that in detail now, but this was just another outlier where it's a definition, but the development standards aren't in the code. One thing I thought we may want to look at is instructional signage, and that is smaller wave finding signage such as enter or exit. We have limitations as far as the total amount of square footage that the signage can have and also the height. So, if you wanted a freestanding sign that said, "Parking is this direction", it can only be this tall, and lots of times, edges are this tall. So, just conflicts like that we wanted to try to look at. Additionally, there are potentially signage for pole-type signage as far as banners on streetlights or street poles. Currently, a banner is prohibited within our code unless it falls within a right-of-way. So, that would limit any sort of signage on a street pole. Let's say, walking into the entrance of a building. Say, the new Newcom Hall would not allow for that type of signage. Additionally, within more dense developments and, I guess, urban core areas, we'll find A-type signs, which I have photos of a lot of these signage types later on. But that is basically the sign that looks exactly like a capital R-A, which is two boards, breaks in between, used lots of times for either advertisement or menus for restaurants. So, is that something that we want to say we definitely want to prohibit it still? We want to potentially say that if you're a restaurant and you want it right outside your restaurant, you can do that. As of right now, you can't. So, those are the things we want to start looking at. So, I have photos of a lot of these signage types that I just spoke about. I'm definitely one of a visual person, so I think we'll help overview all of those signage types. I'll go kind of quickly to as well, just for time's sake. And I guess the point of this exercise is to get everyone thinking about what signage have they seen? Anyone who pays attention to it. Lots of times, though, if you're in a new place, that's important. Especially if you're battering your phone dyes, no GPS, you can't figure out point A to point B unless it was good signage. So, some we need to look at, sure. So, landmark signs are larger entrance signs for the most part. Typically, 20, 30 feet tall, substantial height. I've set multiple descriptions here. They can be really, really bland and sleek, some architectural elements to it, or you can get really fancy internal illumination. I'd like to see how much this one costs, but those are landmark signs. It can also be really large for a county or a specific department, but the purpose of the sign is saying, "You've arrived at this place." And it's a large place. Either it's a large district, a larger community, that is landmark signs. So, this is at LAX. Kind of unique. It's almost artistic signage, if you would. So, then landmark signs start kind of flowing into monument signs. So, in my mind, a monument sign is just kind of like a gravestone-type sign, like concrete in the grounds. But it can also be large enough where it almost acts as a landmark sign, and really unique, fun things can be done to them as well. Or you can just have the sign that's just so huge and monolithic that it acts as a landmark sign. Even though it's more of a wall, it's truly a landmark or monument-type sign. So, the typical monument signs that I think everyone's familiar with, this is at every planned unit development. Most business parks have similar type monument sign. And this is what our code currently does allow and actually requires at a lot of development sites, new development sites and zoning districts. And it can be internally illuminated. It can have multiple panels to describe tenants. LAX again. I don't know how that showed up twice, but, you know, this is something that I think we're all familiar with. So, we start looking at directional signs, and it almost has to be broken down. Is this directional sign for pedestrians or is this behavioral traffic? And it seems like a really simple breakdown, but it may be something that we want to look at in our code. Maybe not just a directional sign is directional sign. That's fine. But I think that the placement's also going to be important because we want pedestrian signs in certain locations versus larger directional signs for automobile traffic. So, these are the instructional signs I was talking about before that have limited sign size as far as square footage and height. So, it would be basically impossible to put any sort of signage in front of or next to these signs, or they'd be useless. This is more of a behavioral directional sign, very unique. I think they were associated with a zoo, but they offer street signage as well as certain parking areas. This is part monument sign, part directional sign. And this is a typical directional sign you see on the side of almost any road. Again, they can be really artistic. They can be really plain. I think that's something that we just want to really allow the design professionals to have the way to do different orientation, 3D graphics, and that type of thing. So, again, the directional sign for pedestrians is just in a smaller scale. You can see they're located in the sidewalk. I guess we're envisioning something like this needed within Marina District as it starts to develop. I wish you could see this one, but it actually has distance markers as far as how far you have to walk. I don't know exactly where this was located. All these images came from Google Images, so thanks to Google. But this was really unique, and I liked that because it showed the distance to each landmark. So, it wasn't just an arrow pointing you in that direction forever. So, I thought that was something that would be unique to incorporate into any sort of pedestrian directional signage. There's also informational signage, where it's not necessarily saying a mile to the left is this, not to the right is that. It's more of an informational kiosk, but this isn't quite that kiosk yet. It's just an informational sign. And this is the typical kiosk I think we're all familiar with, where it's just, you know, you are here, and this is the map, and kind of gives you an overview. But what's interesting with kiosks, and they've got different styles, different themes, kind of like this one. But what's happening now is they're becoming digital, and the technology is becoming available where you can press certain buttons, and it's going to talk to you, which is also helpful for ADA reasons as well. This one's actually a touchscreen kiosk, and I have no idea where this is, but I thought that was interesting. So, this...
Jeff, just a quick question while you're on that last sign. Do you classify signs that just give you a number, a number to dial for information? Because that's happening, that's happening more and more where you, they have a sign, and it says, "Just dial this number."
I don't think I quite know the type. Is it...
Well, I think they have it at, they have it at some of these state parks. I think like that where you go to a specific location, gives you kind of like a, you know, maybe you call this a landmark. You're here, and dial this number, and it just broadcasts to you, you know, information about it. So, if it's not in here, it's just something to think about.
Yeah, I wasn't even aware of that, but that's interesting use as well.
Also a question. The specific type of sign that Marina District is proposing, can you identify that sign also? Have you come across?
The actual signage package isn't 100% yet, so I don't have the final drawings for Marina signage. What I can say is there's a landmark sign envisioned being developed as well as monument signs for both location as well as direction. And then, basically, not necessarily every type of signage in here. Some were just missing from our code. But for the most part, every type of signage within the presentation is being thought about within the Marina District. Thank you. So, again, these, the pole and banner type signs are currently allowed as long as they're in right-of-way. But that again would limit the possibility of there was a sidewalk that was privately owned. Any type of signage would not be allowed. And again, there's different design packages that come. I'm sure they can do very fancy things with these. As much money as you want to spend, the fancier they'll get. And then, it starts actually to cross over. So, you have the typical banner, and then you also start having like a regulatory-type signage as well that's almost displayed as a banner. So, there's some crossover that may or may not need to be addressed directly. It's kind of unique, but just something that we should probably be aware of. And this, again, starts pushing more into that crossover where it has regulatory signage and also informational signage. Just having that light pole with directional signage and also banner and directional signage combinations. So, any sort of combination signage is... So any sort of combination signage is not addressed whatsoever in our code. So these are the A-frame signs. For the most part, I don't like them and I don't think many people do. They're apparently prohibited. But when I started thinking about it, I don't know if anyone wants to see this or that. But something like this next to a restaurant kind of makes sense. But currently we can't do this. So potentially thinking of how we can potentially allow this. Or we can just thought process about it. And there's also this weird category of signage that's not quite named frame sign, but it's acting like one. So awaited sign, difficult to see that has restaurant specials on it. Or also basically awaited sign on springs, I believe. So from nineteen fifty-seven, there's new technology for sure that's starting to be implemented and our code's sound enough. Now there's this really weird push getting into signage that's public art or public art that's signage. The photo doesn't do this one justice, but it's a really unique shape and then just says food court on the side. But for the majority of it, it acts as really art public space. And this from a distance looks like mural. However, there's information and really it's dual purpose. And then going back to the LAX sign before, that when you see it in the first place, you're like, yeah, that's, that's a sign. When you see it in this manner, you're like, wait a minute, is that still a sign? Is that art? What is this? So again, it's more of thought provoking versus we need to have this covered in our code because prior to this vote, I've never seen this. It's kind of interesting, I thought. But there's definitely some crossover. So envisioning what our sign code could have in it. We could kind of have a sign family created. And we wouldn't necessarily mandate that every sign has to do or look in this manner. But we could just have a typical drawing that the city expects for a specific signage. That we could provide to community code and incorporate into our code ordinances. That's it.
Any questions from the board?
I have a question. When you, when we take this on, whenever, do you research other cities, local towns that have a coastal to see what they've done?
My favorite thing to do is borrowing other towns definitions. They often have been well vetted and I guess the saying is you don't have to reinvent the wheel. So we'll definitely do an area search and see what signage has been implemented and what additional towns and cities have within their codes.
But customarily, or maybe you don't know, when it comes to signage, is it determined by district? Like the Marina District would have a certain type of signage and then a strip mall would have another type of signage?
Currently within the code, it, specific zoning districts dictate what type of signage is permitted. Also proximity dictates, dictates what type of signage is permitted. For example, if you are adjacent to Blue Heron Boulevard and I-95 intersection, I think within five hundred feet, you're allowed to have a rather large pole type sign. But if you were located on Broadway, you wouldn't be allowed to have the same type of signage. So it's a kind of, there's different ins and outs and I guess site specific regulations that are in our current code. But we definitely could look to see if there were district regulations we want to try to work on. It's really, it's wide open.
When you're referring to site, are you referring to site S-I-T-E or site S-I-G-H-T?
Like parcel properties specifically.
Site, okay.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
I didn't see anything related to the temporary political signs.
Yeah, and you won't.
But why is that? Because it's political?
Well, no, I think because it's extremely legal. I think that this was actually probably six years ago. I think the Planning and Zoning Board started discussing regulations as far as political signage and where can what be placed and who can place what where. And it's, it's a slippery slope because I believe the requirements and the legal codes allow for removal of political signage if it's placed in the right of way. However, if it's on private property, it can be touched. I might feel a little bit rusty on that, but that's what I recall. But I guess the problem with even this workshop now is a lot to cover. And I quite honestly don't think we have the resources to really work on that one. But this is something that's come up before and it's interesting, but I think that it may be left alone.
Mr. Chair, a follow-up.
Go ahead.
Well, I certainly would agree that the right of way is probably not the best place for a campaign sign or a political sign. Simply sometimes you get to the end of the street and you can't see for a political sign. You know, and this definitely, I understand the free speech component, but it's not even safe in some, some respects. So I definitely understand the right of way. But there's no, no, no kind of, nothing to prohibit a person from putting it on private property, correct?
No. And what's interesting is the most popular political sign I've seen is, they call it a snipe type sign. That's just basically the, it's plastic or cardboard and they just put the metal poles in the ground. That type of signage is actually prohibited by our sign code.
Prohibited?
Prohibited, yes. So if you see-
From, from any property, whether it be right of way or private?
It says prohibited within the city.
Really? I guess being that the city is not really enforced because our city is governed by elected officials who all have to campaign. Which I'm not arguing with, but-
Not going to argue on that, but what I'll say is if you see, and I think there was a case where there was, there was an issue with who has the right to remove signs as well.
Right, right.
So I don't know if you have to have a specific title or designation or, you know, to be, have a badge. I don't remember if it was announced, but there's, there's complicated things involved with that.
And now that you mention it, I guess that's probably the way to go and stay out of it. Because, you know, what city employee would you authorize to remove councilman so-and-so's sign? It just doesn't go over well, you know?
Oh, yeah.
Actually, you'd use volunteer.
But one thing that came up the last time about political signs was when somebody does register to run for office, to require some kind of a bond so that after the campaign, if the signs are strewn all over the place, public works send somebody out to pick them up and we charge them. And you know, whatever's left over, if there's anything, gets refunded to them.
Well, let me ask you a question. What is the timeline on this? And I mean, planning zoning and then going for counsel on two readings?
Timeline really hasn't been established yet. So it's just in workshop form and-
Well, the reason I ask, and I want all of our members to pay attention, next month is the primary elections. And I know Wells Recreation has been designated as an early voting site. So we can see all of the campaign signs that's going to go up around here. And I remember last year, when they went up, they never came back down even after the election. So it was like, you know, a few days after the election, there was signs still all over the place. And then one day, I guess, it came from the city manager just removing them. But I think that's something that, there should be some sort of, I mean, not to divvy too far into the campaign or political realm, but there should be some sort of general regulation about signs. Now, as far as the A-frame signs, and I'm just curious for the downtown district and the, yeah. When we're at, I guess, the new, has it been designated as the new tiki? Because I guess the leases up for anybody is, is open, right?
No, they're tearing it down.
No, 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 I meant the option for any restaurant to come in there, not necessarily the tiki. It's competitive, it's open for any restaurant to bid, right?
The location is noted on an aspect, for the new, the new restaurant, whatever it's-
The restaurant? Okay. So I mean, even along the boardwalk area, you know-
Just a clarification, I think the plan though shows the new tiki and then another restaurant.
There are multiple restaurants envisioned. I think it was described as a new tiki just for description purposes. I don't know about property ownership or first right to act or anything like that.
Well, you know, that really nice boardwalk that I can remember seeing, those will fit right in. I mean, I can see something like that could possibly work in that sort of setting when you have outside seating or restaurant seating. Something not necessarily with the specials, but something directional or, you know, something like that. But you know, I can almost see something on a boardwalk that really, that creates a really good synergy with the A-frame signs. I mean, I'm not saying that, you know, that's something that we should definitely, you know, try to go, you know, allow. But it is something to think about. Mr. Chair, I think that's it.
Any other comments? One, one thing in going through this, we might want to break it down into pieces, you know, and go through the definitions and prohibited signs, which basically is the first section. And then dive into the second section, which is some of the construction issues and so forth. But one question I added, I think there's still a little ambiguity between the banner and the flag. Okay? And no, I'm not sure, I'm not sure it's clear enough. So something to take a look at. Because when we, you drive down Blue Heron, those long thin signs, I don't know whether you call those flags or banners. Okay?
Or like into the ground or on poles?
Not on poles, in a base. Winn-Dixie has about fifteen of them on their property.
They're currently defined as a banner.
They're defined as a banner?
Yeah. And I think it becomes an issue where it's asked this code enforcement and the site property owners to bring them through a process. They're removed from one site and then they're replaced by another property owner. It's this property owner had them and it's just an ongoing battle. But they are fairly expensive.
I would like-
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
I would like, you know, to see if we were more involved in the code enforcement process. Simply because we see it in draft language and ordinances and sometimes you go around the corner and you be like, oh my gosh, really? What's going on here, you know? I think it works best, and I know code enforcement currently is a part of the police department. But you know, I don't ever see, I mean, I hardly ever see-
In a lot of cities, it's actually part of community development.
Right. But you know, because you know, quite honestly, and I guess it, it should be a component of both. From the enforcement perspective and at least from the community development. I mean, you have to have a good understanding of the ordinances and the intentions and the implications in order for you to get out and do any kind of enforcement. So that's just like police. You can't go and be a police until you've been through proper academies or training. So I think it's kind of good that code enforcement understands the codes from the planning perspective. So that, you know, it just creates a better enforcement.
Yeah, I think at one point in time, it was probably ten or fifteen years ago, code enforcement was part of community development. And that one, it was called CDEC, was the acronym for it. So it was divested and placed in the police department. What I can say that does happen now is if, for example, if community development staff is aware of an item, we will either inform code enforcement or we'll write a letter to a property owner and caution code enforcement. So we're definitely actively involved. And I think it's a system where we have a limited amount of code enforcement officers. So if at any time somebody sees something in the city that doesn't quite seem right, that, you know, it kind of takes the community to follow along. So planning staff basically has been directed, you know, if we have a site visit and we see something that isn't quite right on the way to the site visit, that, you know, we're going to inform different departments of whatever problem it may be.
Follow-up, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Just one last question. And the reason why I say that, because I guess a prime example of why code enforcement and planning department should work together is because when you played that slide earlier that shows the actual lot of the actions they care, then I guess technically that sign that advertises the meeting is illegal, correct? According to the code. And that's why it's important. Just like when I see, I see, and I hate this orange sign that code enforcement places when a lot is overgrown. You know, you don't even notice that the lot is overgrown until you see this bright orange construction colored sign. And I'm like, oh well, I guess it serves the purpose of letting the owner knows that it's, you know, that the property needs to be maintained better. But you know, we're enforcing and also breaking the law, same here, so.
It's interesting because our code actually requires it to provide signage. So I guess, I don't know what other type of signage it provides, however, it actually works against-
Maybe an A-frame. Any other comments on the, oh, just one question. One of the things I saw here on the billboards is that they can't be on the roof of a building. And the corner of Lake and Blue Heron is a building with a billboard on the roof.
Yeah, it's, it's considered by staff to be a weak line of conforming. So if the property owner decided that they wanted to demolish everything and start over, they wouldn't be able to rebuild what they have. I don't know the history, I don't know how they managed that, but it's definitely a unique site.
Any other comments on the signs? Okay, move on. No public comments, no public. Correspondence?
All right, no correspondence.
Okay. Planning and zoning board member comments?
The membership list on the back, is that, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Microphone. Microphone.
The membership list, was that correspondence maybe?
Uh, no, it's actually, it's the next, the next item on the agenda, the next number. I wanted to discuss board member terms, that's why I-
Board member terms.
Yes, since I'm small. But while we're on that, I guess the point in including that was to note the fact that the term for Mr. Community, Ms. Davis, and Mr. Wiggum all expire in December of this year. So I just wanted to notify board members early. And that way we can create council agendas to extend membership if you desire to do so.
Okay, so if anyone who desires to go forward, just notify you or not notify you?
I'd love to be notified either way. And that can just be through a simple email.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Does it require reapplying?
What we've done is it just requires a request to be reappointed. Full application hasn't been required. For whatever reason, the clerk's office doesn't have adequate information, then we'll be sure to obtain it, but it's not for application.
Mr. Chair? And I actually just wanted to kind of comment on public, excuse me, board comments. And just about the code again. And it was really interesting, I read this code and I kind of, I guess I breezed through it the first time. But I would really invite you guys to get some, some spare time to just go into the code. Specifically, you know, the duties and powers of the planning board. Because, you know, there's some things that I think we could be doing to really improve the process. And, you know, I think it is wise, regulated, or at least established by the state statute that you have a local planning agency. So I would like to see some of these things work. And I would definitely like that we have some sort of presentation on the Cunningham Park. Because that was a really nice park. And I know myself, Mr. Wiggum, Ms. Brooks, Mr. Hamilton, Ms. James, Mr. Colton, all are out of District One. So I think that's a really great thing. And you guys are more than welcome to be a part of it. But this is a long time coming, especially for that park. And I, and I really want to see, you know, how we could really be a part of that process. So, you know, I don't want to say we need a motion, but I would like to see if that's something that, that we should be looking at, Jeff. You know, when, at least according to our ordinances. But I would like to- to our ordinances, but I would like to see, you know.
I would prefer if the board made a motion.
Really?
Really. Again, I haven't seen the plan across my desk, so I have bosses, other bosses have bosses, so I think the point is.
Would you like a motion to bring the Cunningham Park before planning and zoning? Is that the motion you're looking for?
I believe that's the motion the board's looking for.
Okay.
Mr. Chair? I'm, you know, and I absolutely respect what you're saying, Jeff, but it's not about the motion, it's about the process. I mean, we're, I guess, this is the law of the city, we should have been seeing it, so why do we have to make a motion? And, and again, I'm not questioning you on the Cunningham Park, but this is something that we should be doing, so why is it that we have to actually, a motion is a formal request, so why do we have to formally request something that's already entitled to us by way of code enforcement? I mean.
The board does not have to make a formal request, however, I have not seen the plan come across my desk, so that's just my suggestion to the board.
Okay. Sure.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
That the P&amp;Z Board see all local public improvements come across their regular, regular schedule meeting, which would include the Cunningham project.
Do we have a second?
I can hear it. Can we repeat it? I'm sorry.
She's got a question. She's got some questions.
She's got a question.
She's got some questions.
I just didn't hear the entire motion, I just want.
I'd like to move that all public projects inclusive of the Cunningham project come across regular schedule P&amp;Z Board.
We have a motion.
Just as a point of order.
Yes.
I'm not sure how to define what that motion's asking for, that, the way I'm hearing it, that's every public project of the city is or will be presumed, which is both.
One clarification, it's my understanding that there's a project specifically Cunningham, which is an improvement, which is a public project, apparently state statute indicate that such projects come before P&amp;Z Board, or P&amp;Z Board, therefore, not to limit a specific project, even though discussion is on a specific project, to incorporate all projects, and that, that's public projects, because if that's the language of state statute, we would like to be in compliance, and not just the one project, and that's my understanding, we want to be in compliance.
Maybe just reword the motion a little bit, and leave that last part off, just, just exactly what you want staff to do. Okay, just kind of take the first part of what you're saying.
Well, I guess, if, if I can just comment, I guess if I, it makes sense that I repeat twenty-seven thirty-six of the ordinances, it speaks to no street park or other public way, ground or space, no public building or structure, and no public utility, whether publicly or privately owned, shall be constructed or authorized in the city, nor shall any real property be acquired by the city until and unless the location and extent thereof are submitted to the board for its information. So, I mean, I give, I guess I was just speaking for the actual park per se, so if you want to, because, I mean, that's a lot, street park, public, ground space, you mean any public project, that's quite a bit. I mean, public project could mean a DOT project, which I don't think our city has anything to do with. A public project could also mean a port of Palm Beach, which our city really doesn't have a lot to do with, but.
I'll be glad to draw the motion that we are not looking for compliance to state regulations. In fact, I'll draw.
Okay.
Maybe the motion should be that we want to see Cunningham Park project as per that statute. I mean, that's specific enough, and it also brings into play the statute.
I'm not making a motion, Mr. Community.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'll make a motion that, make a motion that we review the Cunningham project per statute twenty-seven, is it?
Twenty-seven thirty-six.
Twenty-seven thirty-six.
Ordinance, code.
Oh, it's the code of ordinances.
Uh, do we have a second? Okay, motion dies for lack of a second.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
And, and again, folks, I really, and let me give you why I don't want a motion or second. Why are we doing this? Why are we doing something that we're already entitled to do? Why do we have to formally request? I guess what I'm saying, and this is probably to legal and to staff, by way of, of the statute that organized this board and the ordinances that really sets forth our duties and responsibilities, why do we have to request, just like it's already understood that we're having a meeting on the second Thursday of every month, and then on the fourth Thursday of every month? Why do we need to make a motion to have another meeting on the following two weeks? I mean, it just seems like, I'm not speaking of the actual Cunningham project per se, but I'm speaking of the processes in which a lot of the things that this board is a part of takes place, and sometimes it seems like it doesn't take place, you know, in most cases, so. And, Miss Dobbs, since, since you're, I guess, at the helm there, can you kind of explain like the twenty-seven thirty-six, this is exactly what the, the code of ordinances is describing, you have a new park that's being, you know, being improved, wouldn't that be?
Well, I don't want to give an advisory opinion, I don't have, I'll read the section, you're talking about twenty-seven dash thirty-six, and I don't have, and I'm unfamiliar with the background for the Cunningham Park, so I, I understand your concerns, and if it's in our code, then we have to abide by our code. However, I do understand Mr. Gagden's position as far as staff is concerned, we don't create the agenda, we don't create the items that per se are presented before the board. Sometimes items go through a higher upper chain, and so it makes it easier for staff at our level to present the information or your request to the proper persons, and we're able to get access to that information and bring it back to the board, because some things he hasn't seen, some things I haven't seen, I can't control what goes on over me. So it makes it more formal and easier for the direction that's coming at our level to take it back to our superiors, so to speak, of your requests and of your concerns of whether or not it's in compliance with our code, at least to bring it to their attention of your concerns.
So, I guess what you're saying is that in this particular case, it requires, it would be beneficial to make it a motion?
It would be absolutely beneficial for it to come formally from this board as a directive to staff on what you would like staff to do, whether it's answer a question on the Cunningham Park as it relates to compliance with a particular section of the statute, if you're requesting certain information. If we haven't seen it, we have to get it from somewhere, and so that allows or opens up doors to allow us to be able to present it to the proper persons, which also may be outside of our department, which we have no authority over, including parts of race, for example.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
I'd like to suggest that the, the chair may be writing a letter to whomever requesting clarification as far as, but if the twenty-seven point indicate and inclusive of the Cunningham project, and maybe a written response can be presented to the P&amp;Z Board.
Well, you're the chair, so.
No, I'm not the chair.
Well, for this meeting, but you're.
Listen.
Actually, I don't, I don't have, I don't have a problem, I don't have a problem with the letter, but I, I think we asked for a legal opinion, okay, and the legal opinion says that in order to get the information in this specific sense, and maybe surface the other issue of the ordinance, a motion might be the formal.
She did not specify motion, she said.
No, she did.
Yes, she did.
Yeah, she said motion. So.
Yes, and we would like to be clear, whatever motion you make, whether you're asking a legal opinion, because there are different channels that your requests go through, or whether you're asking something specifically from community development, so we just want to be clear, staff wants to be clear of whatever directive that we are being given, so we can respond appropriately.
So, do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion that we request the Cunningham project. Subject two, not subject two, what's the statute?
Twenty-six thirty-six.
Twenty-six. Twenty-seven thirty-six.
Twenty-seven. Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a, any other comments on the motion?
Yes, for all intents and purposes, you know, I, I certainly would definitely support it, but, you know, I, I just think we should do better, and I like the fact that government works, you can tell by the number of people that's here today, and I'm not writing any letters, because if you guys can recall, last year, we did a letter, and we see what happened with that. In fact, the motion was made, but can you find out, the motion was directing the chair to write a letter, but, you know, it, it just seems like sometimes.
Well, that's not the motion, the motion is to request Cunningham Park.
And I'm just commenting on it. I, I, I think it works best when we can pick up the phone and call or send an email, but, you know, in the same sense, the ordinance is on us, we're volunteers, but we have to really go beyond just being volunteers and actually, you know, walk these items through. So I'll support it, but I just think that there should be a whole better process going forward when it comes to.
That will be the next discussion, but we have a motion and a second, so can you call the roll?
Your actual comments.
I'm sorry?
Your actual comments.
I did, yeah, but I'm saying now, but they were kind of straying a little bit from where the motion was.
Okay, I would like to add my comment.
Go ahead.
I understand the nature of the motion and the second, and I understand from what I heard that was read, that it's up to twenty-seven point thirty-six, and I was thinking that we are limiting ourselves to a single project when the, what was read was more than two and that was my concern as far as.
Well, that could be the second step, Mr. Hamilton, I mean, I think we can get the ball rolling with this, because it is specific enough that somebody's gonna have to do something, or at least we can continue to push them. So, either way, we have a motion and a second, so can you call the roll?
Artal Hamilton? Yes. Brian Coles? Julius Wiggum?
Yes.
R.A. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Shep Brooks?
Yes.
Henry Canoe?
Yes.
Try to hit my colleague?
Yes.
You didn't with bullying? Motion approved.
Okay, we're at Planning and zoning board comments, or we've been on planning. Any other comments from the board?
I have a personal comment I may.
Go ahead, Mr. Hamilton.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you to both staff and the board for your response during my trials. Number two, earlier I had inquired about a number that might be absent, and if that particular absence might be supplemented by audio, video presentation of that absent number, physical absent number. Legal did research, found that an item similar to what I was inquiring about occurred in the Chandler area. My current request of staff, and I'm hoping that the motion will not be required, to attempt to practice such an item, so in case it becomes necessary, we will be prepared to execute such an item. To me, practice for preparedness is something that should be a routine thing, and something that we should be able to exercise, so that just in case even occurred, we be able to execute. And third thing, I want to say thank you for the training. I thought it was informative, I know I requested training from board members, and was surprised to see staff present also at the training, and they took full advantage, and hopefully, staff, if they find the time, and I'm sure they will not, and not request or burden them with such requests, but give summary of, I think, for those real board members that were not present at the training. Was very informative, and as Ms. Davis indicated, sort of gave light on the legal aspects of our responsibilities, and again, thank you for the training.
Any other board comments? I've got a couple things I just wanted to mention. One of the things that I, that was interesting at the training was that a lot of other municipalities were talking about the value, dollar value of the works that they have in progress that have been approved and working, and the second level was things that are in the pipeline that they're working to approve. I think that's a valuable statistic, probably not very hard to develop, and that's something that I think that, you know, this board would like to hear, the amount of work that we've got approved and in the pipeline versus, and what's coming. So, that's a request I'm making for that. The second thing is, the landscaping at the corner of Blue Heron, both at Walgreens and the BP station, is really deteriorated pretty much, and it looks like, it looks pretty poor, and I think someone needs to get code enforcement working on that. And my final question is, what's going on with the final building at the Ocean Mall?
The latest update that I know of for the remaining building at Ocean Mall is a one-story building is to be built, the sister building of the building just to the south, previously there was a two-story building discussed and proposed, however, it didn't work out in the part where it shows, didn't offer to be forward. I'm not sure if the building permit has been submitted at this point, but the timeframe that I was aware of, this that should be happening soon or later.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Motion to adjourn?
Second. Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
You know.
Good meeting, everybody.
Cunningham was the best park in the town, and.
I hated that they brought it back without tennis courts, and I had to come over here to Wales to the tennis court.
I have to go to, I have to go all the way to Lake Park to walk these places, because my wife used to walk down there, her buddies used to walk around that park, but now.